Dean, let's have a roll call, please.
Layla?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Felka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here. Uh, would you please do this and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item one, the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
Second?
Any questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two is our budget work session. This is for discussion, possible board action, and we'll be looking at all aspects of the FY twenty Blacker County budget. Board, what's your pleasure first?
Well, I didn't know Susan was gonna walk us through some of the handouts and some of those things that you've done, kind of.
Anything you wanna see particular first, or you wanna have her walk through whatever she's got up there?
We'll walk through itself first and then make our decisions.
Okay. Um, when we last met, uh, there was, you had asked, uh, that we take a look at a couple different scenarios. Um, the scenario one up there is kind of where, uh, we were at before. Um, there were some slight adjustments, but, um, it's still basically, um, the urban rate is six dollars and thirty-eight cents, or six thirty-nine rounded, um, tax on residential. Um, and those are both decreases, uh, obviously from nineteen when we included Country View, but also it brings us down to the level, uh, just a slight decrease, uh, from where it was in FY eighteen. It includes, um, nine hundred thousand of capital, capital and, uh, equipment, I should say, uh, capital improvement projects and all the equipment, and this is just in the general fund. Uh, so this isn't, uh, dealing with secondary roads. So, it includes nine hundred thousand. Um, as I, uh, sent in some emails, um, and that history, uh, that spreadsheet, the history of capital, um, that I had, uh, sent out earlier, our average for the last three years has been about one point four million of capital that we've included in the budget. So this would be a decrease. Um, it estimates, uh, using, um, five hundred and ten thousand, um, of reserves, uh, because we, we have more capital on the lists, um, that were submitted than the nine hundred and five. Um, but then I had sent you some information of where we were with our general fund reserves and our percentage. Uh, we ended FY eighteen, um, at thirty-eight percent. Um, that's unrestricted general fund reserves as a percentage of our, um, operating expenditures. And then, um, this is approximately, uh, our estimated beginning balance for FY nineteen. Uh, we discussed transferring, uh, five hundred thousand into the CIP fund to have a beginning balance in there. I also added a hundred thousand into the, uh, technology CIP fund, um, to get those funds, uh, started. So, in scenario one, um, based on those estimates, uh, we would be, um, bringing it down to about thirty-five percent. Um, and I just wanna mention, this does not include any additional funds that we would receive from Country View and add to that. Um, and it also assumes that we would be using the two million that we taxed for in the current fiscal year FY nineteen, um, towards the Cedar Robsey Bridge. So then, scenario, um, two and three, um, scenario two just, uh, uses an additional two fifty, and scenario three, an additional five hundred. Um, so that scenario three, we would only be, uh, taxing for about four hundred thousand of capital and using a million, uh, in reserves, in addition to what we would be transferring out, uh, to the CIP funds to start those balances. And, uh, scenario three brings us down to about thirty-four percent.
That's without Country View again, right?
Right, all, all of these are without Country View. Um, the GFOA, uh, as I sent out, recommends that we have between, uh, three to five months, which is twenty-five to forty-two percent, uh, of expenditures. And, um, you know, different counties, I, I sent you some information, and I haven't researched this really well. I, this was just what I pulled from their, um, financial statements and their financial policies. Um, different counties have, have different, um, policies on fund balance, and, um, you know, there's a, there's a, different thoughts on where that fund balance percentage should be. Um, and some of the counties that, that utilize the method of, um, capital budgeting and planning that we were talking about, they also maintain, you know, some reserves in their capital fund for, you know, um, capital needs that, that come up, you know, things that, uh, maybe weren't planned upon. And so, we have always retained all of our reserves in the general fund, uh, not having any, any other reserves, uh, available for some, you know, capital things that might come up unexpectedly. So I just, uh, wanted to point that out and, um.
So all these monies that we're talking about here, none of it is Country View when we finally close that account?
Right.
So where's that money gonna end up then?
That's a decision that the board will need to make, and, and we'll have to, um, have some discussions about, um, about that. I mean, I guess, my, my thought, you know, and, and it's, uh, it's up to the board, but, um, is that after this budget season gets done, that we start having some, um, we take a good assessment of our capital needs and develop our long-term capital plan. And you can have some discussions on some of the things that were brought up, such as solar, if that's, you know, we need to go back and look at our strategic goals and revise those and determine where we wanna be in the future and, and what we wanna do strategically. And those funds from Country View could, could go towards some of those things. Um, or you can, you know, there's, uh, we haven't discussed that yet, so it's hard to say, you know, what we're gonna do with those funds, but I think.
Is there, um, is it reasonable to, um, ask the question why we don't include that into this FY twenty budget? Cause obviously that account's gonna be closed within the next six months before this budget starts. The three, two and a half, three million, whatever you think it is, so why wouldn't we include that in this budget then?
Well, it doesn't necessarily need to be included in our budget. It would only be included in the, um, the, uh, the ending FY twenty, uh, fund balance there. I mean, that's where, you know, whatever portion that we put back into the general fund. Um, and right now, I'm still uncertain as to, you know, how much that will be. Um, but, uh, and, and if we need to put a portion back into mental health fund, as I've mentioned. So, um, it would in, it would increase our ending, uh, general fund balance once we do come to, you know, the end of Country View and, and determine, you know, what that amount is, and then, yes, I mean.
So would that increase that lower number there, the thirty-three point nine, the thirty-four point five?
Y- yes, I mean, it would, and then.
I mean, it's, saying the reason, we're gonna have a minimum of two and a half million. And it might be closer to three, and that's a given, and it's a given that it's gonna be long before this fiscal year ends, before the new one starts. That's why I didn't know if we should be talking about that now rather than later.
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, we can talk about that now, I just don't know that the board, um, has had an opportunity to think about how you wanna use some of those funds, um, or, you know.
Yeah, cause we talked about this long-term planning, or kinda putting this five-year strategic plan in place and looking at capital, and you mentioned the planning process of it, but the budget. And I think we've, that we haven't had enough time to digest some of that.
Well, yeah, we haven't, that's why, but the money's gonna be put somewhere, and it's gonna be put somewhere, probably within thirty days to sixty days, cause that count's gonna be closed.
Yeah.
So, if you, if we take the effort and bring down the, uh, percent of expenditures, say, what, with that thirty-three point nine, that number's gonna balloon back up again, as in when we have, um, Country View?
It, it, it will increase with, with Country View included in that, yes.
The general reserves, we'll just be placing, that's where we will place it.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying that number's gonna change.
Yeah.
And it's gonna change sooner than later, because you know that's not gonna be six months before you settle that account.
No, but we don't know what that is gonna be, that number.
Well, it's gonna be, I'm telling you, it's gonna be a minimum two and a half million, and she's talking maybe close to three million.
Right, and so, looking at like scenario three, where we're ending with, uh, thirteen point seven, and if you added back, you know, the, um, two and a half, I mean, you'd be back up here over fifteen. You'd be back up at your thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent.
Too much.
But, I guess, and my only thought is, you know, we, we started to have some discussion on solar, and it doesn't sound like everybody is, 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 uh, as informed as they wanna be, or, but if that is seriously something that the board is thinking about doing, and we're looking at some of the, um, buyout options there, um, you know, you, you would need cap, you know, you would need some funds for that, if, if that is something. Um, a couple other things, you know, that have been brought up during the budget that aren't included in here, uh, that we're looking at, uh, in the future, restructuring IT, if that is really something that we're gonna look at and possibly do in this next fiscal year, that's gonna require some additional reserves. And then it's going to be an ongoing additional expenditure, uh, for the county.
Well, and one of the other things we haven't addressed that we know can come from our reserves is the commercial industrial rollback.
Right.
You know, we hope, and we've been arguing that they should.
Yeah, but we held back a portion of it already, right, a third?
We did, yes.
But we, they could at some point take the whole thing, they'd directly do it before.
Sure, but when you're sitting with the reserves at thirty-nine percent, that's something that you can handle, the same way.
That's what it is, we will.
The same way with, um, uh, solar, if down the road, uh, we decide that we wanna try a project, you're gonna have the money there. I, I guess, I, I just don't know why we're leaving that floating out there when we know it's coming and it's our budget. You're talking about doing something with it later, but this is the budget time now, and we're trying to secure our FY twenty here. And, um, it seems like if we adopt this today, we still got a lot of unknowns out there.
We do, and my, I guess my only caution, and, and I had sent this in an email to you, is if we, if we, if the board decides they wanna get us back to closer to twenty-five percent or something, if, if you have some discussion and that's where we wanna be, um, and I think maybe we need to do a little more research on, you know, what the appropriate level for us is, um, is that we do it gradually. And, because if we go down to where we're only taxing four hundred thousand for capital and equipment, um, my concern is that we're not gonna be able to sustain that. At some point, we're gonna have to tax for a million and a half. And, you know, if we're doing that in one year, and then we, you know, find out that we, we wanna do some other project or something else comes up, and then we need to go back to, um, including, you know, the additional, um, million, it's gonna raise the tax rate back up and.
There, every year, there's a lot of uncertainties, I mean, we can't predict what the future's gonna be.
No, there, there is, but I.
How much money we're gonna need, we can only deal with what we got in the commercial.
Right, but I think there's something to be said for trying to maintain a stable tax rate, and I think you can do that with your reserves and trying to, um, uh, you know, a- as we forecast and look forward, I mean, once we have a better idea of our long-term capital needs, once we have a better idea of, uh, some of our strategic goals and what we wanna do, um, you know, then we can, and it, and once we determine what level of, of reserves we wanna maintain, if it's thirty percent, twenty-five percent, whatever it is, then we can come up with a plan of like, you know, how we're gonna do it over a period of years, uh, so that we gradually decrease and get to that point, but are able to then sustain that.
I guess I'm, uh, kinda like scenario one on here, just cause it is, it is a reduction, but I feel like it's more planned out, um, reduction that helps us get to, get to, get to the goal of both getting the reserves down, but also making sure that, um, as we develop what's gonna happen in the county over the next five and ten years, that we can accomplish those goals and needs without the risk of a, of a big tax hike one year. Um, and that's, that's, that's why I like this kinda more planned out reduction of, of the reserves.
I, I personally, and I've said it a lot along, I think it's way too high.
I agree.
I've sat here, uh, before the last four years, and we were, it depends on who you talk to, uh, hanging around that twenty-six, twenty-seven percent, I think is more ideal for the county. When you talk about, you control any tax spikes. I mean, obviously, if it's hard times and, and the county runs into trouble, are you gonna finance or, uh, tax for one point four million in capital? Of course not, you're gonna cut back on that capital.
Yes, but you hope you don't have to do that, you hope with your plan.
Hope, hope, but we're dealing with today.
Okay, well then you plan.
We're, we're dealing with reality.
Well, that's what we all want to do, yeah.
I still say, yeah, I still say you're, when you use those high reserves and create these capital funds, and you got another two and a half, three million sitting out there, it's not even in this budget, we're taxing too much.
Well, we had fifteen million in reserves last year, and we still taxed two million.
And it was too, and I said it was too high then, too, we went ahead and did it.
Well, we were.
I think we need to bring the reserves down to about twenty-seven percent. And, and that's gonna balloon back up when you deposit the two and a half million, three million you got from Country View.
I'm kinda with Tom, I'd like to see it down around thirty percent, but we've got some, uh, positive things to take advantage of here. I mean, the first thing we need to do is finalize the budget.
Right, yeah.
Then we need to look at our capital improvement projects, and solar's a big part of it, so we need more information on that. Because I think the board, we support the solar initiative. And keep, and lowering the tax rate, uh.
Especially after reading this paper.
I think we also need to address the policy and what our reserves are at.
Right.
That's something we need to look at, but, but there's not an opportunity today, uh, cause the priority is just finalizing the budget.
And again, it's, it's, uh, Dan, like I said, it's who you talk to. I mean, two of us, maybe three of us, were schooled for ten, eleven, twelve years, that it should be right around the twenty-six percent.
Mm-huh.
And now, you know, uh, we got an, I think auditing firm is gonna tell you whatever you wanna hear. And they're not gonna tell you if you're at thirty-seven percent that you should be at twenty-five. They're just gonna say, well, you got a healthy, um, uh, reserve, so.
Yeah, I think.
It's really what the board feels comfortable in, and, um.
We're way too high.
I think we looked at the future as far as, uh, taking, what was it, a third for that commercial tax? I feel comfortable, because if they pull the rug out on us completely, we obviously got enough money to cover it.
We do.
Compared to what some of these other municipalities are. Um, I don't think that's gonna happen this year, but we don't know. And, um, but, I don't know.
Well, and, and I, I agree with you, I know that we have heard auditors talk about the twenty-five percent being that two to three months, but I also looked at GFO stuff that Susan provided, and they gave that twenty-five to forty-two, being comfortable in that three to five months, making sure, and I think it's no different than us with our savings accounts at home. You know, if you can have two or three months, that's great, but a little more is, is still comfortable. It allows you to do some things that you wouldn't do. And so I looked at the twenty-five to forty-two and hit about that thirty-five percent was about half. And, and scenario one does do so, do, get us to the thirty-five point two. It does, uh, put in the, the funding for the, um, capital improvements, it does for the tech. And I know, Susan, your numbers there, I thought were somewhat conservative. We didn't, we talked about five hundred thousand to a million, we, we didn't put that in, she just did the five hundred thousand. We talked about IT being at either, um, one hundred thousand to two fifty. We went to just one hundred, so we're not going overboard in any of those areas.
So where are you at on what's your number then, uh, in reserves?
Oh.
Thirty-one?
Well, and that takes us, like I said, that takes us to fourteen, but I said that allows us to look at, we said IT staffing, the commercial industrial rollback's possibility, solar had a pretty high price tag if we decide to do that. Um, and the list of, the little capital list we looked at was like at one point something million dollars, correct? And we're cutting back on that by, in this scenario, I saw with nine hundred and five, but we're still taking about a million dollars.
Taking, um, well, we're taking a half a million out for the FY twenty budget.
Yes.
Um, and then, uh, if we're taking, uh, another half a million, uh, plus a hundred thousand to, to transfer to the CIP fund to, to have some reserves, uh, there. And that, you know, I'm not really sure where those funds, where that, you know, fund balance should be in the CIP, um, but I wouldn't mind it being higher also, um, just to have a cushion there for unanticipated capital things that come up. Um, so I could see having a million dollars in the CIP fund, um.
So could, we, we could do that at a later date, though, after.
We could do that at a later date, you could, you could do that with some of the Country View funds, um, if you wanted to.
Bonding is something, you know, I know some of us probably more than others prefer not to do bonding, and so that's what we'd like to get away from, too, kinda when she's mentioned the pay-as-you-go.
Well, the biggest, the biggest thing for me is, um, uh, the interest rates that, uh, gone from the current bonds, we got what we bought them at below a percent, where they're at now. Hopefully, maybe, we might be setting the county up for a, a rating, bond rating change, because, uh, Country View was listed by muties, muties as a liability. So we get that removed, we might have a chance, I doubt it, but, I mean, we got a pretty good rating right now, but.
Well, and, and one of the recommendations, uh, on the last bond rating, uh, report that we had, to increase our rating was to increase our reserves. Um, now, we've done that, um, and I'm not opposed to, to, once we have some more discussion or do some more research to bringing this percentage down. Um, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be down closer to twenty-five. So I guess I don't wanna do it all in one year. I would like to see it, see us have a plan that we do it gradually, so that we can maintain, um, uh, a more stable tax rate, I think, uh, so that we're not reducing taxes so much this year and then having to go back next year and increase them, um, that's just my only.
The only thing, and I understand what you're saying, Susan, but whatever level we bring it down to, you're still not allocating that Country View money that's gonna show up in there, that's gonna inflate that number even higher. That's a given.
It, it is, but the board hasn't had an opportunity to, to, without knowing exactly how much that is, to have some discussions, I don't think, um.
I think I can safely say two point five million, can't you?
Yes, I know, but I don't think you've had some discussions about what you might wanna do with those funds.
Two point five to three million, is that the full amount, or does that include what goes to mental health?
That might include what goes to mental health, I'm not, I think it'll be around, well.
We'll go see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well. If, if, if we go through the budget again, well, we've got some budget things to discuss.
Mm-huh, I'm sorry?
We've got some budget things to discuss, if we make any changes that'd affect any of this right now.
Uh, like?
Well, I mean, we got some items we gotta cover yet in the budget, regular departments and stuff.
I didn't think we had any other items to dis.
There's none.
To discuss.
I thought we had some, uh, positions and stuff that we haven't, uh, talked about in some of the departments.
I, I think we've gone over everything.
We've included everything from now, yeah.
Yeah.
So who did we approve then? What departments?
So, we have.
Sheriff had a request, did his get approved?
Yes, we have an additional, uh, detention officer and sheriff, an additional office specialist and the treasurer, um, a change in a position at conservation. Um, I think that might've been all the position changes.
I thought you had a question on the treasurer.
No. Oh, oh, just the timing of treasurer, and like I said, if, if it didn't fall, the plan didn't occur as Rita, uh, it was thinking in the spring, and then we talked about, you know, the July one date. But we said, if that didn't happen or something didn't occur in that kinda timing, that we wouldn't just probably approve the position.
But if we prove it right now in the budget, it's hers as an elected official to utilize it.
It, it is, but I would hope.
Yeah, the money will be appropriated, um, the position when she goes to add it would come before the board. So I suppose at that time, you can then decide not to.
Well, we're, we're gonna, I think what we need to do to get off square one here is, obviously, we got some different opinions on where we should have that reserve. And, um, so therefore, I think we're gonna have to have the board make a decision and kinda move on, then we can get into some of the areas we need to, so.
Well, let me ask you this, I was gonna say, the, the four, this scenario one that takes us to the fourteen million, that's less than we've had the last two years, you know, we went from twelve to fifteen in, uh, from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year seventeen, and the fourteen does take us less than the last two years. Is that something?
I'm looking at thirty or below, so that doesn't get you thirty or below.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, it, incrementally it could, you mean just get it to thirty or below this year? So you don't like the thirty-three point nine, you don't like the thirty-four point five? When we haven't looked at the plan, I think.
You can put it in a motion if that's what you want, like I said, we gotta make a decision, but no, I, I don't like that.
I'm forgetting it down to thirty percent, that, I'm making it in a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions?
Um, I, I guess I need a little more, that's, I mean, I guess I can.
Yeah, that scenario's not on here, so what does that do to us?
Well, it.
I do wanna know that.
I mean, I guess I can calculate, um, and back into, you know, what, what that would be, um. Uh, hold on a second.
And you don't have to do that right now, Susan, obviously, it's gonna lower the number.
But then, you know, it, it's possible that then we're, we're using reserves to cover operating expenditures, and I just wanna caution that next year, if we cut, bring it down to thirty, and then that's where we're at, then next year, you, if you wanna keep it at thirty, we're gonna have to go back and include another two million or something in the, you know what I mean, in the taxes next year, which is gonna send the rate.
So you're putting, so you're putting one hundred thousand dollars into a fund now for, uh, IT, isn't that operating?
No, this here, those transfers, that would be taking the reserves that we have.
So, I thought we were talking about employees at.
Capital reserve.
Changing, changing the way we're doing business up there.
I'm sorry?
I thought we were talking about, that money was to help, uh, alleviate and change the way we're doing business in the IT office after we have somebody come in and, and look at it, that's just for capital?
That's just for capital, we don't have any, uh, we didn't include, we decided not to include any funds in the budget for, um, for if we, uh, restructure IT and say we decide to add some positions there. Um, we determined that, uh, we would just, that would come out of reserves, uh, if we did that.
So you're talking.
In, in the, in the first year, I mean, if we did it this year or in FY twenty and we're not, don't have it in the budget.
Well, we've kicked the can.
But then we would have to, but that was one of my things, then we would have to then include those positions, obviously, um, in the future in our budget.
Is it safe to say if the board adopted whatever number right now, that number's gonna go up and Country View's said and done?
Yes.
Whatever, whatever the number is, it will, with Country View's.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor, I got a second, um, anybody else?
Can we get what the numbers are gonna be first here?
Yeah, hold on a second, let me, um, look at this for just a second.
And, I guess I agree with the caution against using any of these reserves right now for, for operating expenses, cause they're not gonna be there next year, and we're gonna have to tax for that, so it's gonna be a drop this year and then an increase next year.
You don't, you never have to tax, yes, there's ways of, uh, managing your budget. I understand we have, uh, increases in employee salaries, we have insurance benefits, and you have constant contracts that are renewals each year, but, uh, they're pretty much around that one point eight percent increase.
Well, you're right, we can always cut people, and we can always cut programs and services, although we're hearing more.
I, I personally don't see running a balance in the reserve right now, say we're at thirty percent of cutting anything, when we wrote it for a long time lower than that and fixed everything in this county.
Okay, so, just a quick calculation of, um, thirty percent, would be an additional, a little over one and a half million that we would have to, reduce, you know, the expenditures in our current budget. Um, in scenario three, we're only looking at four hundred thousand in capital, so that million is gonna be used to cover operating expenditures, and it's really not recommended to use reserves, um, to, to, you know, you only wanna use them to cover your one-time things, capital, um, not to cover, you know, operating expenditures that you're going to have every year, and that, you know, salaries and benefits are obviously going to continue to increase.
I agree with you a hundred percent, you shouldn't be using reserves to cover your operating.
So if we do that this year.
Well, we've got a unique situation right now where our reserves are sitting.
I understand that, but, but a gradual reduction is, is what we would want to do to bring that down, we can, um. Yep, I'm sorry, go ahead, Grant.
I just wanna remind you that, um, and we talked about this not too long ago. Um, when, when you discussed the things that you fixed from, uh, what passports did, um, one of the worst things that they did was spending reserves, um, to cover, uh, to prevent tax increases and using reserves for operating expenses, and that put us in a hole. And that put us in a hole that we had to climb out of, that, um, this board did a good job of doing. And I just don't want to see the board go down that road again. And yes, we do have very healthy reserves now, but it turns around on a dime if you start using it for operating expenses because those monies have to come from someplace next year and those reserves are finite.
Thank you.
That's fine, and I understand what you're saying and where we came from, Grant, but the bottom line is I'm still saying we're keeping too much of the taxpayers' money.
Yes, and, and so do something gradually like Susan has presented.
Well, we got up there within four years because we weren't at 38% four years ago, I don't believe.
But, but I don't think the taxpayer is going to be happy, they're going to be happy next year when their taxes go way down. But then if you have to rate, double them, triple them the following year, I mean, I.
We have control of the rate every year, Susan, as a board.
But you don't have control over trying to find a million and a half that you're taking out of the budget this year that you're going to have to add back next year. And unless you're going to, you know, cut something other than capital, you'd have to cut staff, you'd have to, I mean, in order to get that rate back down.
I don't agree with you.
Okay.
The reason I do is because I've been through it up here before.
Well, we know we can cut. We do know that.
We cut 12 years ago. Since then, we haven't cut an employee that I know unless Grant did, made some.
Yeah, what year was that, Grant? I don't remember that.
But you could see on the history.
I'll get you the year, Craig.
Pardon me?
I'll get you the year.
Okay.
I don't have it on my tip.
But you saw on this information, how, how many years we were below 25%. I know.
Really, too, I don't know if we were below it.
We were. Take a look at all the years we were. From 2007 even to 2012, we weren't near 25%. And so we started working toward that. That's been a lot of years.
I think all the board is saying is, is the high 30s is too much. We've had a motion on the floor in a second to bring it down to about 30%. And I think that's very reasonable.
You know, we got fortunate this year because we had valuation growth. Last year we didn't have valuation growth. And that did put us in a better position as well, so thank goodness for that, but I.
I, I'm, I'm going to need to have just a little more clarity if, when you're voting on this motion. I mean, it's hard to say what our actual reserves are going to be even at the end of this year. And to put 30% in there, I guess I need, um, I mean, looking at this, do you want to estimate something?
You recommended putting more in the, uh, IT and the CIP. Do it that way.
I'm sorry?
You recommended earlier that you're already putting some in the CIP and the IT, put some more in there, make it healthy. You showed us the graph of what other counties do. I didn't agree with, they got theirs way too high, but I agree we should have some money in that. Healthy funds, so put it in there.
And the question I have is the, what, what's the timeframe? I mean, it's, it, it, I believe it's for this next fiscal year to get, get it down to 30%, but I do agree with a gradual, getting there gradually. So on the motion, what is the timeline? Is it this next fiscal year? Is it within the next five years? Maybe that's a discussion that should come later when we're talking about the, uh, what's in reserves, the, the policy we have for the level of reserves we should have for the county.
Isn't that the goal is really to hit that, I mean, where we want that mark, to have that decision when we're discussing this capital?
But the next board could change it way back to it another way.
Yes, I mean, you know, we can look at that policy on our fund balance and we can determine, um, you know, a, a minimum that we want to have. We could determine, you know, that if the fund balance is over X percent, um, that, you know, the excess will be, um, considered to be used for, you know, tax relief and/or we can come up with a plan that it needs to be, you know, brought down to X percent after so many years or, you know, there's some, there's some options there. I, that's a discussion, you know, that we can have later. Do some more research on the appropriate levels that we want to have. We can talk about where we think this, uh, reserves in our capital fund should be, um, you know, and put some money in there.
And every board you have will want to have a different idea of where they want all the reserve, everything to be. So, you know, this is, this is the scenario we put.
Unfortunately, Susan, those were talks we probably should have had a month ago or two months ago. What we're here today to decide is to come up with a budget for FY '20.
Well, if we're there next year, no?
As far as the, the motion goes though, um, these, um, this amount of percentage of your fund balance as, uh, compared to your expenditure budget is an estimate. And we don't really know what it's going to be at the end of fiscal, this fiscal year. And so you, I think you really need to put a dollar amount in there of reserves that you want to use, rather than trying to pin it to, uh, percentages that you don't really know what it is yet.
The board was given three scenarios, scenario one, two, and three. All we're doing is adding scenario four with a different number.
Right, but, uh, for our purposes here today, it really needs to be, as Grant said, a number. So this number down here, FY '20 budgeted use of reserves, in scenario three, it's 1 million. You know, a quick calculation, if we are just, uh, without considering Country View, if you want to get down to 30%, this number here needs to be, uh, at least two and a half million.
You want to take a recess and figure that out so you got it for the board before we hold a vote on that?
And there, that wasn't including.
I can work on that as still will be a little bit.
In there now.
I'm sorry?
I said that wasn't including Country View before and I don't want it in now.
You do or don't want?
No, you, you don't have it in there now. If you wanted it in there, you should have had it in there now. We're not even considering Country View right now.
Because it was an unknown though, because we don't.
That's right, it's an unknown, so, just like every year, there's a lot of things that are unknowns that happen every year.
No, but we'll, we'll have this number. I just wanted to be clear that Country View, uh, will add to this fund balance here.
We realize that.
This 13,730, and if, if you want me to.
So if we cut that down to 30%, Susan, that number's going to inflate higher with Country View when it's said and done, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Do you want to take a short recess so I can?
Sure, we can take a recess.
Okay.
How much time you need?
Uh, well, just let me, uh, yeah, 15 minutes, let me.
Could we have a, another scenario that would just be if we did the maximum of capital? If we did all the capital this year out of reserves instead of capital plus operating expenses?
Yes, I can do that too.
Yeah, we've kind of hesitated on that because we wanted to go.
Okay, we'll take a 15-minute recess. We'll come back here, we'll come back here about 10:20. 11:02. Susan?
Okay. I did two more scenarios. The scenario four is what Chris had asked. This is assuming that, um, we take all of the capital, uh, from reserves in FY '20, so we would have no capital included. That amount, uh, is the amount of capital that we would be taking from reserves is 1,415,396. That brings the fund balance down to 32.9. And here are the rates, 622,354, and the percentage decreases from 19 and 18. To, uh, and this is, I just backed into this, but to reduce the fund balance, um, down to approximately 30%. Um, and that is, um, this fund balance, uh, not including any additional from Country View, but to get this fund balance down to approximately 30%, we would have to use, uh, 2,597,403 in reserves. That would be all of the capital and 1,182,007 of reserves would be used to cover operating expenditures in FY '20. And that would bring the tax rate down to 601, uh, 602, uh, and it would be a decrease. These are the decreases, uh, from 19 and 18. And then over here, if in FY '21, we had to go back to the tax rate of 638, um, because we're going to have all of those operating expenditures, uh, we're, we're going to have capital. Uh, it could be more than this and we wouldn't have the flexibility, uh, unless we wanted to dip below and depending on, of course, what we decide to do with additional reserves. So it could be higher than the 638. Uh, but if we went back to that, um, then in FY '21, we'd be looking at a, an increase in the tax rate of 6.1%. Um, I didn't go through and calculate, um, any kind of attempt on the, um, on the, um, actual taxes.
And, and none of this has, uh, Country View figured in it?
Correct.
Okay. Board, got any questions?
Susan, could you cover scenario four again?
Scenario four is assuming that all of the capital, uh, that we have, um, in our budget this year, that we, uh, use reserves to pay for that, that we don't include any in the taxes, uh, in the tax askings for FY '20. Um, that total amount is the 1,415,396. Um, we would obviously, you know, we can't do that every year, so obviously the next year, whatever capital we had in the budget, we would have to, you know, depending on our reserve level and where we want it to be, but we would have to, and it's been approximately 1.4 million, um, for the past three years.
So does the board want to revisit the capital of the 1.4 million? See if there's any, uh, reducing that number?
That was what we were wanting, I guess, the time to look between now and the next few months to take a serious look at that because it was going to take a considerable amount of time. And we're kind of running up against a timeline for this has to be end of the courier, decided into the courier by Friday, correct?
Yes, if we want to hold the hearing on the fifth.
They have a hearing on the fifth.
I think that number's good. We leave that where it's at. 1.4 million for capital.
Good side, downside, Susan? Just curious to hear you. I said, you're doing your job. I know it might be counter to what we do, but I said, I do like, want to understand sometimes.
I think we've only, we've already, and Grant mentioned already, um, you know, I think part of our goal is to, to maintain a stable tax rate. Um, and if we drop it next year and use reserves to cover operating expenditures, you know, you could be looking at a sizable increase or, as Grant mentioned, you know, uh, trying to, you know, get back to where we were or you cut other things, cut operating expenditures or, um.
That, that 30%, Susan, how much of the reserves are we using total?
2,597,403.
That's about what Country View could be.
And this is, I mean, what, what I need right now is a number to plug into the budget. So if, if you're going to make a resolution, um, I, I'd like it to be like X amount from reserves. Um, you know, if it, for whatever, you know, uh, reason, if the reserves don't end up actually at 30%, I mean, we can, but, but that's just based on my estimates right now.
Okay, let's see if we could move off of square one. So, um, I got a motion on the floor to drop that number. The reserve's down to 30%. Got a second? Can we call for a roll call?
Leland?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
Treelka?
No.
White?
No.
Little?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll entertain something else, board.
Okay.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, utilize scenario three, and that is, uh, budget a use of reserves of 1,010,000 dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other questions? Does that a roll call on that, Mr. Veder?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treelka?
Yes.
White?
No.
Leland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Okay, so we got that part done. Where do you want to go next?
As far as.
Home.
I'm done as far as that.
Let's take a break.
I mean.
We're good.
Unless there's, no, whatever. Unless I don't understand, this was the only decision.
Is there anything else the board would like to address on this FY '20 budget? Whether it be departments, uh, salaries, anything, now's the time to do it.
No.
Nope.
No.
Nope. Susan, nothing more?
No.
That was easy, wasn't it, folks? Well, if that's it then, and you're satisfied, then.
Better mine. Okay, wrong choice of words.
I said she was, I didn't say I was. I think that's it then, and then you'll, um, have her ready, um, we already published it.
Uh, we'll publish it next week, um, and we'll have the hearing on the fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
So we still have, if something come up on the color blue sky, we still could have an emergency meeting if you saw something that we missed.
Well, after.
Know what that'd be, but.
After we publish it, we can reduce it, but we couldn't increase it.
Right. Okay, board, is there anything else? Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Same move. Second.